Good afternoon. At this time, we'll call to order the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners for our meeting of November 27, 2023. Let the record reflect, we have a quorum of all three commissioners. And if Nancy Chance would lead us in the pledge, we would appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Nancy, I should have just had you stand up and stay up. Nancy, and all the other stuff she does, puts on a great party called the Festival of Trees. And it was our great honor to have attended many, many years, and also to receive an award from Good Samaritan Network. Can you come up to the podium and share? Well, first, tell us how successful your party is. How successful the Festival of Trees?
Well, we're still crunching the numbers, but it's way over 100,000, so...
That's wonderful.
Which is wonderful, because it goes directly to clients, as you well know what we do.
And how many people did you serve for Thanksgiving?
We served 5,998 people.
Wow.
And I'd like to recognize Steve, because he was not there. So I wanted to recognize you for outstanding leadership through 2020 to present, and how you guys navigated in such a powerful way. If you'd had your plaque, I would have read it to you. I didn't know you didn't have it, or I would have brought my paper. But you guys navigated a very difficult time, the roughest time, I think, in our country's history. And I think that we, as not-for-profits, were also included in every step of the way, which does help broaden the horizon on how you approach people and how you solve problems. And I want to thank you for that. That's the leadership that I saw that brought, you know, business and politicians and the not-for-profits together to problem solve, and still doing that. But we also felt that you've done an outstanding job of putting together the best emergency management system that we've ever seen in the country. And I know, because I talked to a lot of people in different states, on a lot of different levels on things, and their emergency management did not fare as well as ours did, and I think it's because our police fire sheriffs, all those people have been working collaboratively for so many years, but also developed a cohesive relationship during this time, under great leadership that you've put together, and I think it's second to none in our country. So I just wanted to recognize your leadership, all three of you, and Steve, because you weren't there, I wanted to recognize you personally, and thank you for all you've done for our county.
Well, we wouldn't have gotten through that mess without teamwork, and we were very happy you were on our team.
We're happy that Good Samaritan Network and all of you are on your team.
Nancy? I'm going to ask you to pay up here.
I don't look very good, but I'm sorry. I'm floating across today.
We'll do it over here.
I'm hoping I do that in time to change clothes, but I just can't get up.
Hey, wait a minute!
She's in my class, so I have to say this.
Did you only hit me with it during this meeting?
I'm kind of nervous with you having that heavy object.
I have to say, Nancy, the box is almost as nice as the awards.
It's beautiful. And feel free not to have to sit through our meeting if you'd like, if you have something more important to do, which you always do, so feel free to go. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is approval of executive session memorandum.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And the next item is approval of the 11:13, 23 minutes.
Sumoed.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
We move on to highway business.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have a very light agenda for you today. I have basically nothing, except I do have a request. Our small structure, 23023, 196th Street over Unknown Stream, which is set to open bids at your next meeting, when we originally had sent out the notice to bidders, we had a... The work item was listed as highway bridge over water. Since this is a four-sided structure, we would like to change that, so we could also use heavy grading, light grading, and small structures, all different end-of-classifications. This will open up the number of bidder, possible bidders we could get. And we will notify everyone we can of this change, and recommend the board approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have, and Brad has one.
Just one item, we're getting close to the annual bid program. We've had one vendor contact us asking to just renew. They're willing to renew for 2024, for the prices of 2023. This is Dalton's Chemical Vegetation Control. We've used them before for grass growth regulation and weed control in the northern part of the county, in more rural areas. And they were the only bidder when we actually went out for quotes in '21, and then we, which was for '22. Then we renewed in '23, and this will be a renewal for '24 as well. So I'm recommending that we renew again with them.
Motion to approve.
To get the same prices as last year.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, we're moving right along. Is Susan Peterson here?
No.
I didn't think I saw her. Chris Mertens. Yay, you're in there.
Here's Susan.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
The first two are related. They're related to some work rewiring we have to do at the sheriff's office. We had three years, I guess, a number of cables and wiring run down the elevator shaft, and the fire marshal finally, I guess, came in and during inspection, said that all had to be moved. So those... The first one is for some switches that we need because of the rewiring and the work that has to be done, so that's hardware-related. The second one is just for the fiber reruns, the cable reruns. So those two are the first two.
And go ahead, just go through all of your items.
Go through all of them.
The third one is just an annual signature we get on a Verizon document. There's no commit to purchase, but we sign it every year, gets us the pricing we have as a federal, as a government entity. And then the last one is the Concutronics Extended Support Agreement that we have annually. It went up slightly, but it was just a 5% increase, which is well below most of our vendor increases for support. So I just recommend approval for all those.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, I should have had you not even sit down. We have her ready for you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Hopefully, you received a copy of the report that we had from Fairgrounds in this past And also then the rental rates that we are asking for 2024. You'll notice that we asked for just a 2% in a majority of the buildings at Exhibition Center, and then 10% with the lawnmower barn, knowing that it will soon, or hopefully with the upgrades, that we will then be able to incorporate those cost increases, something like that. Hopefully, so today, one, we're just here to present the report, letting you know that, again, 72% of all of the facilities that are on the Fairgrounds are paid events. County usage, extension usage, all of that are outlined then in the pie chart, which you'll see on page three. So we just like to share that every year, so that you know that we are trying very hard to rent the facilities, and then it's also being utilized by county residents in educational programming, also in training for county officers and other county government. So if there's any questions on that, or if you have any questions on...
Motion to approve.
Second.
I imagine this upcoming year and the next will be difficult for you to coordinate. I assume you're working with all your tenants to let them know that perhaps there'll be issues with access and facilities?
Just so you're aware, we won't be having the state of the county out there this year either, because with the road situation, the way it is and stuff, it's just not, and the construction going on, it's not a good time. So we'll go back to the embassy suites.
Okay. Do you have any questions from us, or anything?
When will we all be there?
Soon, very soon.
We appreciate all that's happening and your support from this review that's going forward. We know that it's going to be a rocky year, but we're trying to do as much as we can, you know, to communicate, not only with possible renters, but other users as well.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good luck. Okay, you need to wait on the next item till 1:30. I saw Monica in the audience. Are you prepared?
I am prepared.
Very good.
She's always prepared.
Well, this one isn't hard.
Good afternoon. I had submitted a list of meeting to purchase food for meetings for traffic safety and council on alcohol and other things.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I saw Ralph come in. Mr. Watson, are you ready with your 2024 Community Corrections Grant Agreement?
We received our grant award notification several months ago from the Indiana Public Defense Department of State of Indiana. We just recently received the grant agreement, and for, grant agreement for $2,667,783. And that will be funding for our residential level supervision at the amount of $1,838.622 and electronic monitoring, $702,080. And it also includes $126,541 for pre-trial services, for the pre-trial services department. And CJ was hoping to be here, but I don't believe he's made it yet. So we're just asking for your approval to enter into the grant, the grant agreement with the state.
Second.
Discussion. How was it compared to last year in terms of reimbursement?
Very same. The challenge is, though, that they cut $2 million from last year. Of grant applicants, they reduced the grant awards by $2 million. And we're anticipating that there will be some reductions in the future as well, due to funding levels.
Okay, so the state has a record year with surplus, and they're cutting the community corrections budgets.
They did not, they did not raise in the budget, they did not raise the community corrections appropriation. The legislature did not, even though we had asked for that. We gave them some information as to what we thought was necessary. So we were, us locally, we were working very hard just to keep what we had, because we knew that some of their awards in the past, they've been awarding dollars that had been returned to them, and as unused. So we anticipated that there would be some budget cuts, but we were not one of those.
Yeah, well, we're very lucky there. So, all in favor?
Aye.
I think I saw Stephen come in.
Yep.
Oh, Jill's here, I'm sorry. Just hold off one... Jill, I didn't see you back there, I'm sorry. Good afternoon.
We have a couple of public defender issues. The first one is that in Superior Court 7, for the remainder of this year, Jake Ziegelnus, who was the public defender in there, has gone to a different law firm. So David Thornburg is going to be taking over the contract in Judge Murphy's court for the remainder of 2023. That's our first thing on the agenda.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And then our second is, we have all of the contracts for 2024, that, for your approval. And I went ahead and submitted the chart that you've asked for the last couple of years with the totals, so you have the chart already. And we gave a copy to Ken, too. So I think, I think it's in order. I didn't know if there was any questions I could answer.
I didn't understand, the first page has a total of 2.3-plus million?
Yes.
And the second page looks like the same, but is it different course?
I believe the first page is the annual, is the annual, how much they're paid yearly, and then the second page, I believe, is how much they're paid per month.
Okay. This one to make sure.
Yes.
Okay. And we're up to $2.3 million?
Mm-hmm. And that doesn't count the, if we have special public defenders who are paid hourly, if there's a conflict of interest, we have trouble with special public defender come in, and they get paid hourly. If the defendant speaks Spanish, we have public defenders that speak Spanish that work with those defendants.
Do you have an idea what that cost is to the county?
I think it's a couple hundred thousand dollars. We just looked at the numbers a couple, a couple weeks ago, believe it was a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, well, I know it got pushed back from the actual public defenders before when I suggested, but I truly think we ought to ask the Indiana Public Defender Council to review what we're doing, to see whether we should investigate having in-house public defenders. I mean, this, this cost is going up steeply, I think, and will continue to go up.
Yes.
And with the conflicts and everything else, if, and it's more cost to us.
Is that something that we have Connor start to look into?
We could, but it's a separate entity, it's state entity. But it's, Andrew Cullen now runs that program, and I know him from United Way. And it's a process where we just ask them to look at what we're doing, and determine, you know, give us some idea of cost and what the state would supplement, because if we have our own in-house, the state will supplement to some extent. And I, my concern is that we truly give the folks in jail appropriate representation, and it's just, I don't see the same accountability really with the private contracts, other than the judge's supervision, which is in itself kind of a conflict of interest, as an independent arbiter of what these people's fates are.
I can tell you, several years ago, we did check into that, and anticipated trying to do it, and it's been several years ago, and financially, it did not work out.
But maybe it's time to look at it again, because there's no cost and there's no obligation.
Yeah.
Do you have a problem with that?
No.
Okay. So, do we vote?
No, motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll go, this would give us a full year to look this over, awarding the contracts and...
And I can, yeah, and I had just spoken with the chair of the Public Defender Council not all that long ago, it was that unrelated question. So I could send us an email to Connor, and I'm happy to do that.
And they make sense, it may not, but I think it's our duty to look into it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you, Jill. Now, we're trying for Stephen.
Where are you going to put those public offenders?
That's why we have to have a whole year. I think we're acquiring a building profit, three.
Haven't even got home enough people.
No.
No, that's, that, four, four people, five people, about all of them.
Mike, you remember when we looked into that almost before?
Yeah. It's dispersed a little more widely these days with more courts and everything, and more magistrates, but it might.
You don't know till you look at it.
It's worth looking into, especially with that long of a list of defenders.
Well, that big a dollar.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's not how long the list of lawyers is, it's how long the list of clients is.
Stephen, we digress.
No worries. Well, good afternoon. Today, I'm here with a proposed draft policy for drug and alcohol testing policy for DOT or CDL drivers and those in related safety-sensitive positions. Really, this policy is being proposed to close a compliance gap related to 49 CFR 382.601, which pertains to the misuse of drug and alcohol by CDL drivers, and the obligations of Hamilton County to maintain a driver educational program. So I've worked with a compliance vendor that we worked with, as well as county legal. Welcome any questions, but otherwise, I would request your approval, and if approved, there's a signature page.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. I did see one amendment page that shifted the burden of routine testing once somebody tests positive.
Correct.
Okay, is that our current policy now, or is this...
Thankfully, we haven't ran into it, but I would say that was one of the, the gaps that I was seeking to close there. So if someone tests positive, the obligation that they were to stay employed with Hamilton County would be that those follow-up testings, which are also set by regulation, would be the, the cost burden would be on that employee.
Okay, and we don't run afoul of any employment laws by doing that?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions on it? It looked like a very professional job, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks a lot.
Sorry, I'm not covered up with the public contracts. Community Development Block Grant, Michelle, and I think I owe you a call. Did they resolve their funding gap on...
Not that I'm aware of yet, no, so we're still going to need to circle back and brainstorm about that.
Okay. Hopefully this week.
Yes. Today, before you, I have a funding agreement between the county and the city of Westfield for their Blackburn Road sidewalk installation. The total funding agreement amount is $172,000 of CDL funds, and that is the total amount of the project as a whole.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Committee Report.
I just wanted to thank Steve Wood and all of his staff for everything that they've been doing on the Christmas lighting ceremony that happened this Saturday, and you see all the decorations up, and spent a lot of time over, over the weekend, getting everything put together and late into the night, working on it, and I think they did an exceptional job.
It is pretty.
Yeah.
Very, very pretty.
I also want to thank Todd, and Sheena, and Chamber, and Riverview, and everybody else that was involved in our childcare grant application that had to be reached by, when was it, today or something, Todd?
No, it was Friday.
It was Friday, yeah.
And we had held our meeting, I think the week before that, Friday or whatever, and everyone had to really put it in high gear to get all the stuff together we had to apply for this $750,000 Employee Childcare Grant. So kudos to you, Todd, and to the Chamber, and Sheena, and everybody that was involved. Great job.
Well, along those lines, you know, it's a rough exercise to put together quickly, but I think it's helpful to us with respect to cost and budgeting and forecasting. I mean, we were able to pull together a lot of data quickly, but I think if we're serious about pursuing childcare for not only our employees, but other governmental entities, knowing those numbers is very, very helpful.
It's a great team effort.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Attorney?
Yes, I have a few items for you guys today. One is, we are in the final steps of creating the Hamilton County Community Development Corporation. It is a social welfare not-for-profit that is organized and operates exclusively to support Hamilton County and any Hamilton County function. The first meeting will be tomorrow, and my recommendation is for the board to appoint the initial three board members of Dave Richter, Dan Stevens, and Steve Shorts. By the bylaws for the Hamilton County Community Development Corporation, they will serve on a yearly basis, and the appointments will be made by the commissioners annually.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your work on that.
The second item I have is to request for approval, subject to legal review, and the president of the board commissioners' approval, is a, an RFI for the financial analysis for the Crisis Center. This will be ultimately using opioid money the county has received. We're in the final steps of trying to get that RFI drafted and sent out as for a professional service. We are doing it just to get several proposals in, to see what's out there, see who would be interested in, and to get this project up and running, so I would just ask for your approval for, again, subject to legal review, and the president of the board commissioners' sign-off.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
The last item I have is tapped invoices. This includes two EEOC claims that we've successfully concluded, and also work on the VSL litigation. I have that for your approval today as well.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And that's all I have until the public hearing, until Mike has it.
I also want to point out, Connor was part of that group, too, although he was sending in Florida as he was talking to us virtually over the phone, and he was on the beach in his bikini, I guess, but...
Well, he worked the whole time.
I know, I see, I'm thinking, this isn't much of a vacation, because I was harassing him. Apparently, you were harassing him. Apparently you were harassing him.
Yeah, we all were harassing.
He was still on duty.
It was just working remotely, that's what it was, but by the way...
Mike, do you have something? You have a settlement?
Oh, yes. I have, we've been long involved with a group owning property on the north side of 146th Street with lazy people. We find, several months ago, I asked you to approve a settlement that would do two things, and we've gotten rid of the farmer group, but we would pay out of liability trust $20,000. We would also enter into an amended settlement agreement. The section of that amended settlement agreement, we originally agreed with the property owners that they own 120, 138, let's call them there, but at certain locations that were explained in great detail, working with the Highway Department, that the developer would be able to have two ride-in, ride-out intersections at the prescribed locations under the terms of the agreement. If those ride-in, ride-outs were completed, designed pursuant to standards by Highway and inspected prior to December 31st of 2023, the county would contribute $100,000 per ride-in, ride-out. The additional term of the settlement was, we would extend the terms of that part of the agreement for two years till the end of 2023.
Twenty-three or twenty?
I'm sorry, 25. Two more years to 25. And last I heard, there hadn't been a lot of movement, whether it happens or not, we don't know. But under that, if they, subsequent to that deadline, we would still allow them to do it as long as it was done to our specs, inspected, designed according to our people, but they would not get the $100,000 reimbursement. The $200,000 is being, is appropriated and is continued to be held by Highway, so there's no existing additional appropriations.
So what's the amendment?
The amendment is to extend the period for completing the ride-in, ride-outs from December 31st this year to December 31st of 2025, a two-year extension.
And we get for that what?
A release from all pending litigation concerning...
But I thought we already had a settlement agreement that did that.
That, that's part of what I presented to you, it would be, this would be part of it, and the other would be $20,000.
Let's, I move to table, and we'll talk about it in, in exact, we should have talked about it in exact on Friday.
Okay.
Mr.?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I want to get Highway's opinion.
Sorry, does that poll here?
Huh?
Poll here?
Yes, so we're turning. Okay, at this time, we will proceed to a public hearing, and the subject of the public hearing is the recommendation toward a public-private agreement for the development, construction, operation, and transfer of the Hamilton County 4-H Fairgrounds project. This commonly known as a DOT. And this is the opportunity for anyone in the public that cares to comment on the proposed agreement to come forth. So at this time, I'll open for public hearing, the consideration of the DOT for the Hamilton County 4-H Fairgrounds, should anyone care to approach the board.
Yeah, I have a few things I'll say, I want to say to you for the staff for purposes. So as you all likely are aware, the Hamilton County issued an RFQ for the 4-H, and also the, at the time, we had, as one big DOT, but for the 4-H and also the Pleasant Street Office Building and HHW. The review committee consisted of Lee Buckingham, Dan Stevens, Steve Wood, Kathy Williams, and Ken Alexander. Myron Asium, Hagerman, Envoy Skender are the four vendors that submitted proposals. After interviews, the review committee believed it was in the county's best interest to split the project into two separate DOTs. One is now, the ones we're here for today, which is the 4-H DOT, and the second one is Pleasant Street Offices and HHW, which will be at a later date. The review committee, after making that recommendation, also recommends that Hagerman be awarded the public-private agreement. We have drafted and prepared the actual DOT agreement for your approval today, with a guaranteed maximum price of $15 million. With that being said, Steve Woods in the back, and he can provide a counter or two about why the review committee felt that Hagerman was the right choice for this project. And this is the public hearing that is the last required step for the, this DOT procurement method.
Line up, Steve, please.
Thank you for having me up here. About the contract and selection, selection, we had several good companies apply for this position. We felt that Hagerman was the best in the way that they produced self-performed work that they're very capable of, which will help us on the pricing of this contract. We'd like to move forward with it to get this project going.
So the scope of the work will include what?
So scope of the work will include new facility, the remodel of the Lama Barn, the retention, a big portion of the retention, and some driveway work where obviously we repair.
I think it also replaces some buildings that are taken because of Pleasant Street.
Correct, so part of that, part of that is, we're losing two buildings because of the Pleasant Street project in Noblesville, which we're replacing, replacing the new facility at that same time.
Okay.
So what is the split of work between them and Envoy?
So Envoy, we believe, will, will be awarded, they'll get the second part, which will be the HHW facility. So that's going to be the Pleasant Street Offices, that's going to be the HHW building, and soil, water, weights and measures, demolition of a building as well, so they'll have that portion of the project.
And the Envoy part, the HHW and the Pleasant Street Office Building, that will come at a later date. They are going through a scoping period right now with that one, so they were not ready to have a guaranteed max price and to have the public hearing to award that public-private agreement. So this is just the 4-H side of Hagerman today.
And the Hagerman contract, we've been in negotiations with them for quite a while, getting some stuff on it, that contract, which comes to what we all agree on.
Okay, and so what's your ETA on the Envoy or the HHW?
I'm going to say the first part of January into December.
Well, the buildings are coming down, so I think...
None of the essence.
Time is of the essence.
Correct, it is. We've already made plans, we're moving forward with the trailers and the storage and the operations for the HHW.
Okay.
So we'll be good, we'll be good to move forward.
Okay, so everyone comfortable, we have described the project?
Motion to approve.
No, no, we need to have the, the public hearings open, and we really haven't told the public to come up yet. So, in our massive audience, is anyone here to address the DOT? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Just the President, say true.
Lovely.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the attorney, attorneys are complete with their presentations. We have Director of Administration, please.
Thank you. First thing I have for you today is presenting for your review and approval, and the signature of Commissioner Harebrandt is a Water Infrastructure Disbursement Form related to the November invoice from Westler Engineering in the amount of $176,461.26. That's for Design and Construction Management Services related to Phase 2A and 2B of the U.S. 31 Bakers Corner Hamilton County Regional Utility District Project.
Have you reviewed these?
Yes, these have been reviewed, and Mr. Wood has also reviewed them, since he's reviewing all of the bill submissions related to the Hamilton County Regional Utility District.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item I have, I'm presenting for your information and review, it's a list of Health Department 2024 Health First Hamilton County Grant Recommendations. Director Jason LaMester put together a team that evaluated a large series of grant applications for the 2024 Health First Hamilton County Grants. Jason will be bringing grant agreements to you for your signature, once they have been signed by each of the entities that will be receiving the Health Department grant money. I don't know if he has any here today or not, or if he can wave it to us.
I've got several of them.
Okay, so he does have some of them with you that he would ask for your signature on today. Again, these are for the 2024 Health First Hamilton County Grants that his committee is recommending for 2024.
Yes, just, I mean, just to add on to that, just for some information, for your information, what we've done, and our committee, and I'm really grateful to our committee that worked on these. We received 13 applications. We pushed through and, and developed grant agreements for nine of those 13. One of them needs some work, other was a duplicated effort that was already being undertaken by the county, so we were cross-matching our applications for any of those that, that might have already applied to the county for some additional funding. And then another one of the grants that we didn't award, we actually have funding from another source that we can do that with. So it's like, you don't qualify here, but we can take care of you there. So I do have nine of them that have been signed and sent back to me of those 13, and a total of all those 13, our award for this year so far is going to be about nine, or $639,915 that we're going to be able to grant out. I think there'll be some more that we'll be able to do as we move into the first of this year, but right now, that's where we're at with this first round.
That's great.
Which one was a duplicate?
I believe it was the Indiana Center for Prevention of Youth Abuse and Suicide. I think they kind of had a duplicated one as well, as I believe, I didn't bring my other notes with me, is much of that one was also within, like 70% of that one, I believe, was in the city of Fishers. So that was other issues that we also addressed with all of these grants.
Got it.
Motion to approve.
And these are signed agreements you're presenting to us?
Yes, yes, I do have those agreements. I do have most of those agreements.
Can you read into the record which ones they are?
For the record, partnership for healthy Hamilton County. Do you need the amount as well?
No, just...
Okay. We actually have two with Trinity Free Clinic, they're doing two different projects. Noblesville Fire and EMS as a project, Heart and Soul Clinic. I just forgot that one in front of me. The Hamilton County Council on Alcohol and Other Drugs is one that I'll be presenting today for your signature. I guess I do also have maybe one other request to go along with that, is one for Trinity Free Clinic. One of their projects, part of their project was to purchase some equipment for their dental, and the Health First monies also have some limitations on the percentages that we can do for, for equipment. And so we reached out to the state and asked them if we could use our school grant funding carryover dollars from one of our previous grants to make that purchase of that for them, and they said yes, because that was used in their youth programs, as well as, which I'm very excited to see this program develop, a veterans and elderly adults denture program is going to come out of it by being able to use this equipment. So I actually have an MOU to go along with this as well today, if that's possible.
Well, I'm in my emotion to include the dental.
Second.
Discussion. As much as we can concentrate on dental, I think it's a really good investment, given the fact that Medicaid does not cover dental, nor does Medicare, I believe, so...
I can't agree with you more, and Trinity has been an excellent partner for us, and I see this as expansions of programs that we've already been working on with them, and they have done, so they are really a great arm for us on this, this element.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your new grandchild, too. Your first grandchild.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to use it as an excuse why I was probably running in the door late, taking a phone call for that, but I didn't know if it would come up or not, so, yeah, it's been a great week.
Awesome.
And I put, I had put red tags on those where they're scheduled, and this is the X one, this is that MOU for the equipment right there for, because it's a little different. Thank you.
Just need the President's signature?
Yeah, the President's signature would be fine.
There obviously is something wrong with these grounds.
That sounds like you're deciding today.
Keep going.
Commissioner Altman is signing those out. Move on to the next item. Next I have presenting for your information and board discussion and potentially a vote, if you are so inclined at this time. Every month I keep getting asked by multiple department heads and Tammy Sanders whether any decision has been made regarding closing on the day of the solar eclipse, which is April 8th of 2024. As you're aware, the county, many department heads in the county have been meeting every month for several months now, and continue to meet on a regular basis to prepare for that day and those days, the events of that day. The Parks Department has, is planning to host two or three day-long events that are going to start sometime, I believe, around 10:00 in the morning, if I remember correctly. And they're hoping for more volunteers, and based on that, they are continuing to ask me whether any decision's been made on whether the county will close either all day or half day for the solar eclipse on April 8th.
Well, I hate to make that decision now, because we don't know what we're doing. I mean, that's my opinion, and we have county employees that probably, if we're going to do things like that, they ought to be voluntold. I mean, we have a workforce that we don't know how to distribute, so...
Yeah, the only other comment that I'll make, being President of the Indiana County Commissioners Association, our poll, our board members, and right now I have, I think 14 of the 16 right now are voting to close their buildings that day, only because of the schools are out, and a lot of the cities as well, and with the schools, they're, you got to deal with childcare as well after it. And so the last time there was some type of solar eclipse that was down in Kentucky, I know there was gridlock on 65, and from every indication that I keep hearing from everybody, there's going to be gridlock everywhere on this too, so that's the only reason. I understand your point.
Well, I think we can close facilities, but that doesn't mean a day off. That's my point, and that's the discussion I think we need to have.
Yeah.
It's one thing to say, we're not going to have a reporter's office open, or we're not going to do this, but we have how many employees that our program shouldn't rely on volunteers when we're paying people? And we have to figure out an equitable way to balance this.
Point volatility.
And we have not done that.
Yeah.
I don't, I'm not sure what you're saying. Explain that again.
Okay, you can close county buildings, but not release the workforce until we know what's needed for workforce. That's my opinion.
I know the courts too would like this, be able to schedule as much in as bans as well.
The courts have their own...
Well, whether the building's open or not.
Yeah.
So, that's why.
I have communicated with Dottie Carlson regarding how that could be handled internally, payroll, there are different options. I advised that, I knew the commissioners wanted everybody to be treated fairly, so that it wasn't a situation where some people were off and paid and other people were working and would never reap any benefit. Obviously, she indicated that it could be treated like a holiday situation, so that everybody would get either...
Well, then we need that discussion, so let's have a work period to do that.
Okay.
But I'm not going to, my vote will not be to do anything until we have that information in hand.
Sounds good. I will have us plan to...
Let's do it sooner than later, because...
Maybe add that to the executive session.
Well, it's not executive session material.
Work session. Next works, next available work session, perhaps.
Yeah, the first meeting in December.
Okay. Thank you. Next thing, presenting for your information, excuse me, we have a request that has come in recently from Noblesville to have the Noblesville High School Orchestra use the north side of the historic courthouse to play as part of the Noblesville Holiday Parade Event, which is this... Event, which is this coming Saturday, I believe. So we were asking for your authorization pending their, the submission of their event application and their certificate of insurance for the ability to use the north side of the square for orchestra to play that day.
Motion to approve.
Second.
What day is it?
I believe it's December 2nd.
That's a Saturday.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Free concert on the square. Sheriff.
I don't have anything for you guys today, thank you.
Audit.
That's what threw me off. Sorry. Okay, first I have for your approval, the compensation agreement for Kathy Williamson and the county for 2024.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next I have capital asset notification final disposal form for your approval.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Chris, those are for your signature. Next I have acceptance of letters of credits and bonds for your approval.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Then I have payroll for your approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I believe, Kim, that's it?
Whoa, shocking. All right. I believe we have reached the end of our agenda items. Does anyone else have anything to consider for this meeting? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And we will restart our meetings at 3:00 with executive session, joint meeting with council, and then open session, joint meeting with council.
Is it 2:00 or 3:00?
3:00.
3:00.
3:00.